Last time, you guys. All right, so next on our agenda is the proclamation recognizing November 16th through 25th, 2025 as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and this is brought to us by Supervisor Bushnell.
Is anybody here for this?
Yeah, there's a few of us.
You can come forward. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, whereas the theme of hunger and homelessness — I'm gonna wait just a minute. Whereas the theme of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is Housing is a Human Right and Food is a Human Right, and whereas people from all walks of life, including individuals, families with children, employed and unemployed workers, elderly residents, veterans, disabled individuals, and youth are impacted by hunger and homelessness, and whereas the community recognizes that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many individuals and families living in Humboldt County, and no one should have to worry about whether they have food on their plate or a roof over their head. And whereas 18.9% of the population is below the poverty rate, 16.7 face food insecurities of whom 6,000 are children, 30,000 residents are enrolled in CalFresh of whom 26% are children, and 80% of children qualify for free or reduced school meals. Most live on fixed incomes or survive paycheck to paycheck. Food for People distributed 2.6 million pounds of food, serving 21 individuals. And whereas while homelessness creates barriers to accessing essential services such as affordable housing, healthcare, childcare, and education, the cost of these necessities often contributes to hunger, food insecurities, and people experiencing homelessness on any given night. And whereas the aim is to eradicate homelessness by solving the root cause of it, to educate the public about the reasons people are hungry and experiencing homelessness, including the shortage of affordable housing for low-income residents, and to encourage support for the organizations committed to sheltering, providing supportive services, as well as meals, food, supplies, clothing, hygiene products to the homeless and hungry. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by Humboldt County that November 16th through the 25th of 2025 shall be designated and set aside as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and encourage all people in the community to work together to find meaningful solutions for these problems. Signed, Mike Wilson, Chair.
Thank you. We're here to accept this proclamation, and we thank you a great deal for recognizing Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Some of us work with that all year long, and we're — excuse me. We're accepting it on behalf of everyone, all who have been touched or experienced homelessness, either as a child who's whimpering because they have an empty, hungry belly, or a neighbor who's in the bushes because they don't have a safe place to go, or the people individually or collectively who've worked in efforts or networks to bring resources to people. And that goes over many generations here in Humboldt County. So, we want to thank you on behalf of the people who receive services and the people who provide them. I'm with AHA, Nezzi Wade, and AHA is the people who both provide and receive services. That's what makes up AHA. And the figures for homelessness and hunger are staggering, and the prospects for our future with respect to budget cuts and things that we're facing now based on federal dollars make it look pretty bleak in our future. A cut from 80% to 30%, a 50% reduction. That's huge for us, and it impacts permanent supportive housing, which has been used now for getting most of our folks into housing. The state needs to vest more in housing. 2%, less than 2% of the general fund goes to housing for the state. We really need the state to step up, and we need to work better and put more input and pressure on housing and community development so we can open up different kinds of housing types that we need. We need social housing, we need cooperative housing, we need small footprint houses. We need to do a lot of things that need to be incentivized, need to be funded. There's a lot of things that need to happen, and especially when it impacts extremely low-income or low-income people. And we just got the proposed RIN numbers, nearly 6,000 units, and 52.2% of those are for low-income. And we have categories now of aggravated, or aggravated, but acutely low, extremely low, very low, and low-income. That's a tremendous number in our county, and they're all being impacted. And what's really critical is that for the extremely low-income, yeah, extremely low-income people, 85% of them pay over 50% of their income in rent. And for thousands and thousands and thousands of them, there is no prospect of acquiring affordable housing or homes. So, we really need to — because we rely on the federal government, it's gonna get harder. And so, the only way we can get through this with all of the nonprofits, CBOs, collectively, we all really need to work together. And I want to encourage all of you to reach out to all of the groups now that are working on issues around hunger and homelessness, because we can work together. That's really the only way that we will get through this or beyond. And, you know, we need to do some things differently. And we ask when we declared a shelter crisis to form a task force. And when the housing element is coming up, it's a perfect time to start working with a task force of people who can inform that process. Place people in a task force, create a working group that involves the people who are experiencing these issues so that they can inform it well. And then, we can do this with a focus on creating community and cooperation and collaboration so that we actually bring to Humboldt, to the best ends in what we can do in Humboldt, and I know we can do a lot. Bonnie McGregor was going to be here today. I don't know, some of you may not know Bonnie, but most of you do. She is an advocate still, but when she first came to Humboldt County in 89, she came as having been the director of the Food Bank in San Francisco and the Food Network in California for sharing food. And one of the things that she asked me to say because she can't be here is that she's watched the Board of Supervisors meeting. She watched the last one in the decisions around camping in the county. And she said for all of her years, "This board is probably one of the most compassionate, effective, engaged, smart, and able to affect some of these things." And she applauds you, I applaud you. Everybody is very much aware that there's great potential here for creating some things that we need and need upfront. So, she encourages you to create a task force. You know, we've always been to this place where we have 30 years, or not 30 years, three generations of people in homelessness, and all the people who have stepped up to work on it for generations. And so, that's a legacy that exists. We have a wonderful county and community that are working on these things together that have nothing to do with government, but would like very much to be partners and work hard on getting some of these things done. So, with that, I would just like to say that we need to honor and support each other and everybody who's involved in the process, and continue working as hard as we can on resolutions for hunger and homelessness. So, thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. Carly Robbins, Executive Director at Food for People. I will be brief, because I know we're going long. But I just want to say a few words. The link between hunger and homelessness is pretty direct. Even though 90% of the folks we help at Food for People are housed, they're living that paycheck-to-paycheck life where having to make the choice between putting food on the table or paying their rent can mean they will fall into a state of being homeless. And frankly, this has been a challenging year for anyone doing food security work. From the cuts we've seen to just the last few weeks of folks losing benefits, it's pretty dramatic, and I really only see it going farther in that direction. Pretty soon, federal changes to policy will have significant impacts on how supplemental nutrition assistance programs are administered and who's eligible. These shifts are gonna place more burden on states, counties, our hard-working assistors, our entire team at DHHS who are working hard to make sure folks have CalFresh, and ultimately it's gonna kick people off of the program. And that's gonna put more burden on food banks, food pantries, and NGOs doing this kind of work. Just for a little snapshot, when SNAP benefit delays were announced, we saw 40% increase at the food bank immediately. And that's a capacity that we weren't built to see all at once. And if we see this trend continue, that's a lot more than what we're built to offer. We're working hard. I can say the bright spot in all this is our community and how everyone has shown up for one another, from folks offering their support, volunteering donations. It's been incredible. At the nonprofit level, we're all working together and really leaning on each other right now. You know, Humboldt County takes care of one another, which is what I'm holding on to as we look ahead to these new changes. So, just want to thank you all for your continued work and continued support. Thank you.
Do we have — I think we might have staff who have something to say about this, too.
Robert from DHHS is here specifically to kind of share some updates with us.
Hi, Robert Ward, Housing and Assistance Coordinator with DHHS. Well, Nezzi alluded to the federal changes. I'm happy to speak about that, if you're interested.
Yes.
The Notice of Funding Availability or Opportunity came out on Thursday night. The headlines are, "We're looking at a 30% cap on permanent housing." We're at 91% right now. We're also looking at a 30% Tier One group, so that's the SAFE funding. Traditionally, it's been about 90%. That allowed us to make assurances to our clients, to our landlords, that these are permanent supportive housing programs. That means they're long-term. They should be there, you know, God willing, as long as the federal government continues to appropriate the money. Now, the HUD wants to move back in the direction of transitional housing in kind of an extreme way. So, you know, what's left that you can do with these funds that are not permanent housing? It's transitional housing, street outreach, and supportive services-only projects that pay for services but not housing. So, you know, we could lose up to 70% of our funding. This pays for a little bit for the coordinated entry system, for the homeless management information system, and then the rest is essentially permanent supportive housing. So, with the competition, there are a number of concerning scoring factors. The NOFO says that they can penalize us for, or applicants for past practices of harm reduction. Harm reduction is intimately connected with Housing First. It's the idea that, you know, we're not going to condition getting the housing, you don't have to receive the case management, or get med compliant, or get sober before we're going to give you the housing, and we're not going to require you to maintain all of these things just to keep you in the housing. Because it's counterproductive to evict somebody just because they relapsed. We want to assertively offer the treatment. So, anyway, we can be penalized for that in this competition. And that goes, you know, across the whole country. It opens up the possibility for funds to be shifted from certain jurisdictions and organizations to other, more preferred jurisdictions and organizations. If we're successful in the competition, we could potentially transition 60% or so of our permanent supportive housing to transitional housing. We'll get one year to transition. That takes us to October 1st, 2027, when they would have to fully be transitional housing projects. The big difference between transitional housing and permanent housing is the 24-month limit on how long people can remain in the transitional housing. And the real problem is, we have people in these projects, they either have no income or they have SSI or SSDI. The rent is about $1,000, $1,100 a month for these units, and their SSI benefits are about that much. So, the math just doesn't work. There's nothing affordable, there's very little affordable for them to transition to. We help people get on waiting lists, but those take years. So, there are many other concerning things in the notice that we could discuss. I'll pause there.
That's a lot to take in, so. All right, we have a few hands up, and so, I'm gonna, unless you want to jump in before that? All right, Supervisor Bushnell, jump in before that.
I just want to comment about the homelessness and the Food for People and the work that's done in the Southern Humboldt and District 2 and Humboldt County. I appreciate it so much. I've worked, Robert, with you and coordinated with, down in Garberville area where the services are very far removed. And the Food for People, you know, Bloxburg is a post office, but they come there and serve out of the Alderpoint Fire Station, and likewise in Shelter Cove, and Whitethorn, and Garberville, and Bridgeville. And those areas are very far removed, and the people are just, it's a very good environment. They don't feel awkward. It is like a community event, and I just can't thank you guys enough for the work that's done there. The anxiety that's felt right now with the depletion of funds and people's insecurities being heightened by that, it's just astronomical. And so, the fact that you guys have really just worked overtime and double time to make people feel more secure, I just want to say thanks so much.
All right, anything else from Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thanks for being here, Robert. I saw that news in the headlines. I thought, oh my God, I mean, it's already been tough enough, you know, and seeing funding change and constantly shifting from priorities is kind of a nightmare, frankly. Doesn't really help us solve our problems. But as many of you know, and I think Nezzi was speaking to this just a couple of weeks ago, we gave some direction, informed an ad hoc for a compassionate assistance program to try and work together on figuring out how we can all work together on some of these things. That ad hoc includes DHHS Behavioral Health, also includes the Sheriff's Department of Public Works. But I really want, and two supervisors, Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Bushnell, who have stepped up to agree to help work on this. But I think we all know that we've got some really strong partners in this community, and I'm hoping the ad hoc will be reaching out to them, whether it's called a task force or however it's formed. We have a tremendous amount of wisdom in AHA and Food Bank in Sho in Southern Humboldt, Arcata House Partnership, Betty Chin, and John Shelter from New Directions, who actually gets right out there in the camps, working with people. So, I'm hoping that our ad hoc will absolutely reach out to these folks and seek their wisdom and advice in how we might continue to partner on this compassionate assistance approach to solving some of our problems. We're not gonna solve them all by any means, especially with funding changes, but when we work together, we're gonna do a lot more. So, thanks for being here and giving us the update. Appreciate it.
Supervisor Bone, you have anything?
With California being the fourth-largest economy in the world and everything else, I think it's time we accept responsibility for California and maybe, somebody said focus, and figure out what we're trying to do. We've spent since 2019, they estimate between $25 and $35 billion on homelessness, and it doesn't seem to be improving. It just seems, and whatever we can do, I see a lot of housing being built now, apartments and stuff being built now. But maybe we redirect some of our California funds into solving the one major issue that becomes to every mind, and hopefully we can shake that tree and get a few of those dollars down and not be so dependent on the federal government. So, what they're doing, they're gonna do. But what we can do for ourselves is probably the most important thing. And I appreciate you guys for stepping up. I appreciate, but it's time to address a lot of that money to the problem, instead of saying what the problem is. We've got a lot of people telling us what the problem is, but we're not really working on the problem. We can see that here in the city of Eureka, and now we see it stretching out into the outlying areas. And we just had to address it last week or two weeks ago in our last meeting about where we're gonna let them camp and not camp, which is a very compassionate thing. But, you know, we want to look at, you know, we want to look at our faith-based community, but, you know, as everybody's donations are going down, so is the basket at church going down too, because in these tough times. So, hopefully, we can do a little bit more on our own and not be as dependent and take care of these situations. And at least give them situations that are, I don't know if we'll have independent housing, but in situations where they can get out of the cold, wet, and it's not an emergency shelter, it's the 365-day shelter. And I, you know, you go back and look at the yeoman's work that Brian Hall does, and what he does at the Rescue Mission, and then you look at St. Benny's, what they're doing, and the people that are trying to help. There's a lot of people out there trying to help, a lot, and we really have to appreciate those people. So, thank you guys for what you're doing. And Carly, thanks for what you're doing. I mean, I can call Carly on Saturdays or Sundays. We had a local dairyman want to donate some milk the other day, and I think, it wasn't said much, and there wasn't much said. I went out by there, and it was packed, but they threw an emergency food bank together the other day out at College of the Redwoods, so I want to thank everybody at College of the Redwoods. And I think they had 800 cars within the first two hours. 800 cars within the first two hours. And that was people in need. But that was an emergency food bank that wasn't, it wasn't that it wasn't meant, tried to be publicized, it was just short notice and trying to fill gaps in when people that couldn't get their SNAP benefits. So, we didn't have that abyss that they fell into, and Food Bank stepped up with a lot of other partners and made it happen. So, that was, it's holidays, it's time to give, it's time to share, and I always hope that Food Bank and some of these areas that put most of their funds into their programs and that they are thought of during the holidays, and year-round, not just during the holidays. I know we do a lot, but, you know. Thanks, Carly, thanks for what you're doing there.
May I respond on the state-federal thing? I think it might be helpful to quantify some of this. Yep, so, we have 63 permanent supportive housing slots. I ran some reports yesterday. We have a few more people in that because we're able to stretch the dollars sometimes. So, but in terms of total permanent supportive housing in the county, we were over 390 people. So, most of the permanent supportive housing does not have federal dollars in it. The bulk of the money in recent years has been from the state. The problem is, the state funding is always, we're told it's one time, and we don't know, you know, what's gonna come next. So, you know, a reporter asked me yesterday, "How much do you get from the state?" And I'm like, "Well, you know, we got this much, and it was for these dates, but I don't know what we're gonna get in the future." It's like, if we were applying for benefits, it's like, we got no reasonably anticipated income at this point from the state. Well, so that's not true. There's $500 million that's been appropriated but not allocated in the '26-'27 budget for HF6. There's ongoing CalWorks HSP funding. The HUD funding is like $1.2 million. So, it's been more on the state side, but the federal funding has been great because it's been consistent. It was reliable, you could count on it. The state, meanwhile, doesn't want to increase their year-over-year costs indefinitely, so they haven't been willing to make these ongoing commitments, unfortunately.
We're gonna continue with the board on this, but I just want to note that there are a few people online that have comments. I don't know if it's on this, it's just on the consent calendar, so when we're done having this very brief discussion, then we'll open it up to, because I don't think there's anyone else in the room that wants to comment on things that are outside what we're talking about right now. So, then we'll have those comments in the room first, and then we'll go to the online. So, Supervisor Royal.
Thank you for those amplifying comments. That was helpful. Yeah, I want to go in turns and thank each of you. I mean, AHA, starting with AHA and Nezzi, thank you for continuing to provide in a really grassroots way this support for people to get clean and to get basic necessities, and continuing to voice support for people who are unhoused and their needs. I think that's really critical, and I know that sometimes in the past, we've been a bit at loggerheads over things, and I just want to thank you for continuing to show up and speak for that population and continuing to do the work, because it's not easy. Food for People and Carly, thank you so much for stepping up in this moment. You all already provide so many safety net food services for our community and already do so much, so to have to amp it up is incredibly hard at a time when people are scared and probably people's fuses are a little short, and everyone's, you know, stewing in this sort of sense of uncertainty. So, thank you so much for that. I do see some members of our Behavioral Health Board. I know Laura is here as well and had to just briefly step out, who works for the city of Eureka and does frontline work with some of the most vulnerable folks. And then Kelly and Vernon, I appreciate you both so much and the work you do. So, we're in the room with people who are doing this hands-on, day in, day out. And then, Robert, thank you so much for, like, shedding light on what this really means for us. And what I heard in all the numbers that were thrown around is that a really large percentage of our funding is at risk to provide stable, permanent supportive housing. And so, when we talk about programs that are or aren't working, we do have a lot of people housed who would otherwise not be able to be housed because they need that level of care of, you know, having a caseworker, having someone address some of their basic needs so that they can remain housed. That is what permanent supportive housing is. And so, if we lose funding for that, that means we'll have a lot more people unhoused who can't otherwise be housed in a stable way. So, I'm worried about that. I will say, I'm deeply worried about that, because, just because we currently see people on the street, doesn't mean that our programs aren't serving other people who aren't on the street. So, we have a lot of people who would, I think, become homeless, who we've struggled and worked hard with and invested a lot of time and energy and trust-building to get them to where they're at right now. So, I'm really deeply concerned about that. And, you know, whatever we can do as a board to, you know, tell that story or to advocate, you know, I'll say I'm willing to do, and I believe this board will be willing to do. So, thank you for sharing that. It is, you know, it's about to shove people out unless we find other resources to kind of fill those gaps. And it's unfortunate that our focus on very data-driven harm reduction approaches is being used as the ammo.
Okay, I guess what I'm gonna do is I'll just give my little bid on this, and then we'll go to public comment here in the room, and then we'll go to online. So, if you're online and you have public comment on these consent items, please understand there's a delay, so raise your hand as soon as now, and then we'll get to you in a minute. So, I associate myself with all these comments, especially around the thanks for everybody who's doing the hard work here. And I want to, again, from my perspective, get out there that we have a community of people that are working very hard to address these issues. We have a community of organizations and institutions working with little to nothing or less than before. And we do sometimes have some, within the community, some disagreements on the strategy, on the push-pull, where that is. But make no mistake, everybody wants the same thing. So, I think we're aligned with that. And we just really have to, from my perspective, there's just something bigger happening here. We recognize that this is Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, but there is a larger crisis unfolding in real time, and it's gonna have devastating consequences on our most vulnerable people. So, this week, the Federal Housing and Urban Development Department announced catastrophic changes to the Continuum Care Program, amongst other things. And then, on top of this, devastating food security cuts. They can't, the administration, I'm talking federally, administration canceled — They can't, the administration, I'm talking federally, administration canceled millions of pounds of food already allocated to emergency food assistance program funding. And during the shutdown, this administration chose to block SNAP funding for 42 million Americans after a lower court ruled that they must release the fundings. With no justification, no policy rationale, no explanation, this administration went to the Supreme Court to ask them to rule to reverse the previous ruling, so they continued to withhold food assistance and even demand states claw back already distributed funds. When you work to harm millions of people with no reason, no, the conclusion is obvious that cruelty is the point. Make no mistake, we see it, it's right in front of our eyes. Here in Humboldt County, our dedicated county and city staff, nonprofit organizations, volunteers, and generous donors have worked tirelessly to address hunger and homelessness. All the organizations we mentioned today, Food For People, Arcata House Partnership, Department of Health and Human Services, housing teams, and towns volunteers have built safety nets through extraordinary effort. Our local heroes have been carrying an enormous burden, and now the federal government is making it exponentially heavier by cutting both the roof over people's heads and the food on their tables. It's about priorities. I mean, we have to be clear about that. We live in a nation where billionaires pay lower tax rates than teachers and nurses. Corporations exploit loopholes to pay nothing in federal taxes. And the government claims it cannot afford to house homeless veterans and feed hungry children, yet found trillions in tax cuts benefiting the wealthiest Americans and the most profitable corporations. We have the wealth, we've never been wealthier, and the question is, who gets to keep it? When the federal government slashes housing and food programs while refusing to ask those who can most afford it to contribute, it betrays the hard work of our county staff, our nonprofit workers, volunteers, and donors who have dedicated themselves to helping our neighbors. These cuts leave our local heroes to fill impossible gaps and with insufficient resources. Every dollar spent on supportive housing saves money on emergency services. Every dollar spent on food assistance stabilizes our community. But instead of asking for those who have benefited the most to contribute their fair share, we just see these, these tragic cuts. We can see it. We see the deliberate infliction of suffering for political purposes, and we see the contrast between fiscal constraint claims and tax advantages for corporations and the ultra wealthy. And we just can't accept this normalization. So, to our county staff and nonprofit partners, volunteers, and donors, I want to thank you, and we all want to thank you, for your unwavering commitment. You deserve a federal partner, not an adversary. And so, with that, I'll open up to public comment in the room. So, please line up if you have a public comment in the room, and we're, it's going to be three minutes or less.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the distinguished board, my name is Vernon Price. I come at you this, this morning in many different characteristics. I come to you as a behavioral health board member, I come to you as a community member, and a former homeless member of this community. I'd like to thank MIST, the DHHS, the HHHC, Nezzi Wade and AHA, Carly and her department. I was either going to put food on my table, or my lights were going to be cut off last This is a troublesome time, but I believe we can turn these obstacles into opportunities of us working together, living together, and pulling up our shirt sleeves to grab the plow together. We can do this. We've been through worse than this as a community, and I believe we can make it through this. Thank you so much for all of your support in everything that you do for the homeless and the unhoused and the hungry. Continue on with the wonderful work that you do, and we, as lived experience, will take hold of the other side of the plow with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment in the room before we move to, on Zoom? Moving it to Zoom? What do we got? How many?
Thank you. We have no callers. No, I mean, no hands up.
No hands up?
No.
All right. Is there any more discussion on anything on the consent calendar before us today? Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I just want to recognize the Headwaters Fund Board's recommendation for the loan for Southern Humboldt Hospital. That's, it's very instrumental for trying to get the hospital built down there. Most people know that the current hospital is not seismically retrofittable, and we have to have a new hospital built without that. We don't really have a community that, you have to have some kind of a hospital service in your community. So, I just want to thank that opportunity for them.
Thank you. Medical services are economic development, amongst many other things. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to try this out here. Is there opposition to unanimous consent to passing the consent calendar? Seeing no opposition, the consent calendar passes unanimously. Moving on.